Two thousand fourteen work session of the Riverton City Council order at seven P M. Would Councilman Guard lead us in the plates, please?
The pledge was allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the city clerk conduct the roll call, please?
Yes, your honor, Councilman Rich Guard.
Here.
Councilman Martin Canat.
Here.
Councilman Jonathan Fabian.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Todd Smith.
Here.
Mayor Ron Wartness.
And I am present, thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Christiansen from tonight's meeting.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O, same sign, motion carries. I declare that we have a quorum this evening. Approval of the agenda, I would entertain a motion for the approval of that agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O, same sign, motion carries, mayor votes aye. Agenda item number six, wastewater treatment plant presentation, Mr. Brock. I know you've been excited about this moment.
Wish I was. Thank you, your honor, members of the council. My name is Dan Brock, I'm the chief operator of Riverton's wastewater plant. I've been an operator for almost thirty years. Six and a half of those have been here with the city of Riverton. My staff at the plant is certified and exceptional. It includes three other operators and a mechanic. Our mission is to protect the public health and the environment, that's our main goal. Reader's Digest had an article a couple of years back that ranked water and wastewater operators as the number two job that Americans cannot live without. Which I thought was pretty interesting. Treatment plants require a constant supervision. When, we, we cover the plant ten hours a day, every day there's at least one person there, including holidays. When nobody is there, we have a dialer system that will call out if, if an alarm happens at the plant. And then somebody that's on call will come in to answer that. The, I, I got a couple pics of interest from the early days. This is a picture of the first wastewater plant that went online in nineteen fifty-nine. That's right there in the same area next to where the current plant is at. It's pretty empty out there. This is a picture of the current wastewater plant, early in its, after being online, early in, in, in its, in its years of operation. It looks quite a bit different now. There's no remnants of the old plant there and the drying beds out there are all one big drying pad now. The plant was, new, the current plant was put online in the fall of nineteen eighty-six. Cost eight million dollars at that time. It's designed for four point nine five million gallons per day. It can handle a nine million gallon per day peak load, which is about six hundred, six thousand two hundred and fifty gallons per minute. And it's, that's quite, we've pushed that during heavy rain events. And, and it can handle it. Our average flow right now is about two point two million gallons is what we're averaging at this time of year. And that includes septicage that comes in from the surrounding area, including oil and the gas field. So, we don't just get cities wastewater here, we get outside the city limits also. The plant removes waste using physical, biological, and U V disinfection processes. The biological disinfection portion is divided into two trains and currently because of our low flow, we only have to use one train at a time. We're getting close to, you know, two, two and a half would be about half the design flow and we're, we're pushing that. And during the day it gets up, heavy wet springs, we've had to put on another clarifier just to handle the extra flow. We've gone over three million gal, three million gallons a day when it's been real wet. In two thousand eight, we received an upgrade on the, and got a dewatering facility that, including a headworks upgrade, that cost almost five million, well, I think about five point two million dollars actually. And that was in two thousand eight. We are regulated by the Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality and to some extent the E P A. The D E Q issues us a discharge permit and requires us to do a certain amount of testing. We, we test twice a week on, for our permit on a twenty-four hour composite sample. And we have several tests we have to do on our influent and effluent to show that we meet permits. That's a picture of our influent and effluent, influent is the flow coming into the plant, effluent is what leaves the plant. This shows the influent and effluent. It doesn't look as bad in this picture as it really does on the influent, but, and the effluent is, is really clear. We also have to do quarterly testing for toxicity on the effluent. We send a sample off to a outside lab and they have to, they use two organisms of fathead minnow and a serdaphnia and they have to, grow, survive, and reproduce in our effluent. They actually weigh them and everything, the organisms, to show that they're growing and then they also have to reproduce. And so that, that, that's a, a test we have never failed, at least since I've been there, I don't think it ever has. We have very good quality effluent. Flow, this is our headworks building, this is where the influent flow enters the plant first off. In two thousand eight, we had that, that headworks upgrade, that's all new equipment there. It was screening and grit removal. We have a, a bar screen in the influent channel that's half inch wide, that collects all the trash that comes in. Mechanism rakes that screen, grinds it all up and then dewaters it and, and puts it in the roll-off dumpster. Same with the grit, we have an aerated grit chamber that allows grit and heavy organics to settle out. Basically by slowing down the flow, it's just a big tank so it can drop all that substance out. That gets pumped into this grit classifier, basically water spins out. The grit is dumped onto the conveyor and put in the roll-off dumpster. And that gets hauled to landfill. And with that upgrade, we used to haul out every two weeks. The, the bar screen didn't grind or dewater any of that material and that made for the majority of the bulk. Now that's just a, it comes onto that conveyor, it's just a little dry white puck of material that falls in the dumpster. And most of our material now is, is grit and we haul about every four or five weeks to landfill and. The oxidat, that, that portion of the plant is the physical portion, that we just physically remove pollutants from the waste stream. The biological portion is our oxidation ditch. That, that's a concentrated form of nature. The same stuff that happens in nature hap, we concentrate that in the oxidation ditch. We use organisms, microorganisms to remove the waste from the waste stream. We supply the food, which is the influent and oxygen with the aerators and mix that all together. And that's what happens in, in, in the oxidation ditch. This is what it, the oxidation ditch looks like, that's called mixed liquor, technical term. It's, it's a biomass, that's, that's basically microorganisms and the waste stream. When you saw a picture of that influent, you know, that just looked like gray water, pretty much with, with few solids. It isn't this, you know, that most of this is microorganisms. And it creates a flock and, and we keep that mixed up and that's what happens in there. From the oxidation ditch, it goes to the clarifier or it's, it's a form, it's a settling tank. And what happens in there is this. That is the same settleometer, just now it's settled out, that's what happens in the clarifier. That, all that biomass settles to the bottom, most of that gets returned back to the oxidation ditch. A small portion of that, about fourteen thousand gallons a day, we have to remove from the system. Because organisms reproduce, if we didn't remove any, pretty soon that population would become too great. And it would never settle out in the clarifier and pretty soon that would just go over the, the weeds. Now what we remove, we call that wasting, that goes to the digester and eventually becomes our biosolids. The, in that clarifier, the clearest liquid in the, in the middle is basically our effluent before disinfection. Little scum on the surface gets collected also and gets sent to the digester. Every day we run these tests, we sample the oxidation ditch, run this settling test. We, we measure the settling rate, we measure the solids content of the mixed liquor in the oxidation ditch. The solid contents in the clarifier, we measure that sludge blanket. And all these numbers that we get determines how much we should waste every day. We know, we keep the solids on hand right now, twenty-three days, that's our sludge age, that's another, those solids stay in the system for twenty-three days. And, you know, raising and lowering that sludge age determines, helps determine how much we would waste every day. Like I say, on yearly average, it's about fourteen thousand a day, that can go from twelve to twenty thousand a day, you know, depending. But that's, that's pretty close to average every day, year round. The, and like I say, the, the clear stuff in the middle then, that's what, that leaves a clarifier and heads to disinfection. These are our U V units. These, again, we have four of those and generally we only have to use two. They, because they're, they're suffi, two is sufficient to treat our waste load. And they are flow regulated. Come night, when the flow drops way down, one of those will shut off, so only one has to run. In the morning, as the flow comes up, and another one will come on if the flow comes, sometimes, you know, it might, if it rained, we'll get up over three, another U V unit will kick on. And that's real nice, I mean, that helps, you know, save with energy, those are pretty big energy hogs. There's seventy-two light bulbs in each one, so, I mean, that can get expensive. From, from there, and, and those are just, there's several clear U, Teflon tubes that run through those. And they're surrounded by the light bulbs and reflectors all, all around those tubes. And what that does is sterilizes the mi, the pathogens and disease-causing organisms that are in the waste stream. So they can't reproduce, they go out and then they're sterile and so we're not sending anything downstream that, that's bad. And this is, this is the end of our pipe, just, and it runs into an open channel just before going in the river. That's what mo, most of our effluent goes there. We do use effluent to irrigate the property of the wastewater plant. And also, we have a permit to use our effluent on the ball fields just to the north of us. They use our wastewater to, our, our effluent to irrigate those also. And, and that state issues us a permit for that and we have to maintain our effluent in a very high-quality manner for them to keep doing that. If, if our fecal coliform count went up above a certain number or something, we'd have to discontinue that until we got it down. But that hasn't happened yet, so we're doing good there. And as far as the wastewater side, then we're done there. And then we go on to the biosolids side of the, of the plant where that wasted solids that we remove every day go to the digester, which is basically an aerated tank that stays aerated so that doesn't get septic and smelly. Keeps those organisms alive and they start eating on each other because we're not adding any more food there, you know, and that helps break that down some more. And then twice a week, this, we pump out of there to our centrifuge. The digester solids are about one to two percent solids, it's, you know, pretty much mostly water. We send it to the centrifuge, about fifty to sixty thousand gallons a day for two days every week. And get about twenty-two percent solids. We'd, we could get higher, we don't want to get it higher because when we put it out on the drying pad in the first year of treatment, we have to stay below sixty percent solids. So this year was very easy for our current treatment year because it was wet. Last year's, we had to add water to it to keep it wet enough. And after that, it doesn't matter what the solids become, it steadily gets drier as, as it's in treatment. From the centrifuge, it goes by conveyor into this dump truck, we have to dump that twice a day. Haul it out onto this drying pad, which was new in two thousand eleven, that's where all the, drying beds were previously before the centrifuge came. At the end of the year, then we start the treatment process on that production year. We keep every year a production year. And that takes two years of treatment. We turn those windrows, we measure the temperature, we have to have, in that two years, we have to have at least twelve months that it's above sixty-eight degrees Fahrenheit. Doesn't have to be consecutive, just has to be twelve months. We measure solids and we have to test four times for metals and pathogens in order to meet our, to, to meet the standards so that we can sell it to the public to become quality biosolids. We do four tests a year, one time, one year, we just have to test four times for the metals and pathogens. And we take several samples out of all the row, rows, make a composite of those and send those off. And we get real good treatment that way, the, we have to have pretty much basically no pathogens in there at all. In order for that to, to start the process, we have to meet class B biosolids, which in order for us to do that, we have to be below two million colin, fecal colonies per hundred mils, you know. And that, and we can meet that, just that little bit of digesting and sitting out here for the year, waiting to start treatment and, and we get there. From there, once we get the, we pass all our tests and go, we can have a stockpile where we sell from. This is currently our two thousand ten production year, it's the solids we're currently selling from. Once we move that into a pile like that to, and it's no longer in treatment, we have to have it gone in two years. We can't just hold, you know, if two years comes, it has to get used up somewhere. If we spread it on the property or have somebody come and haul it away or what, but they won't allow us to keep it more than two years. So, and lately we haven't had a problem, that, that hasn't come up for quite a while, we have had no problem getting rid of it. Our, we sell it at ten dollars a yard. That sounds real, it, it's a really good price, it's cheap, but then we do that in order to be able to get rid of it. You know, we hate to outprice it and then we can't get rid of it. And so it's important that we are able to get rid of it. The, and that's pretty much the end of all our wastewater treatment. That, that's just the solids that is removed from the waste stream and that's what we get there. Besides wastewater, we treat grease from restaurant grease traps. And we also get material from car wash and shop sumps. Basically it's sandy water that haulers haul, you know, basically septic haulers get, haul this stuff in from the restaurants and the different shops and car washes in town. The, the, the car wash sumps, all that has to be tested. Inberg Miller certifies the sumps. The sump owner has to have those sumps tested. We test for three times, three years in a row. And if they are good three years in a row, then they don't have to do anything for five years. They're good for five years other than, I think, an inspection. And the person at Inberg Miller that takes care of that, they, they go out and inspect every year. And then after that, they would have to test again for one time, you know, unless their process changed then. But no, nobody ever has a problem bailing those tests. They test for all those volatile organic compounds and things like that, just, just to make sure we're not getting something that's really nasty. Those, that, that, they dump that in there, that, we have a big drying bed here that's separated into two. Basically it just sits out there and evaporates. The grease, we treat, it comes in in one thousand or two thousand gallon batches. We treat that with dry lime. We mix the lime with the grease, we have a big mixer there, we use our portable generator for power out there because we don't have power. And we have to have a pH of over twelve, mix that for thirty minutes. That high pH destroys the cell structure of any of the organisms in there. And so there's no smell, there's no, it, it kills all the organisms, makes that material inhospitable to any new organisms. And as it dries, it doesn't get all stinky and nasty. And when it dries, it just turns into a powder-like substance, it's not bad. We mix that with the sandy material from the sumps. In the next drying bed over, we stir that around every once in a while, turn it and let it volatilize and then we can dispose of it. It's, it's just, pretty much just like sand then. We also test the, the methane monitoring wells at the old landfill. There's thirty-seven wells over there and every month we test those for oxygen, carbon dioxide, hydrogen sulfide, and, and methane. And there, there's groundwater wells there also, that Inberg Miller does the testing of those. These, these methane wells, we send those results monthly to Inberg Miller and they combine those two things and send all that stuff off to D E Q. And, and that, but we monthly do that, that takes a day to do all those wells. And that's all, they're all around the ball field area and the fire academy, kind of spread all around and through there. We also do, the little league concession stand right there has a gas monitoring system that would shut the power down in there if the methane, if there was methane that leaked up into that building, you know, that's very explosive. So, you know, electricity and gas or whatever, if they're using any kind of cooking things in there. So it just shuts it all down and, so we test that, we go over there with a gas bottle of methane and test that alarm system every year for them. them. Uh, we also do tours. We, we give lots of tours, uh, the middle school for one every year, the whole seventh grade science class. In two days, four tours a day, comes to the plant and we, we, uh, we, and I think that's a great thing. Kids need to know what happens when they flush the toilet and where it goes. It just doesn't disappear. They, they're, they're very good when they come down there. It's a, it's a good tour. Hectic, but it, it's, it's a, it's a good experience for everybody. Uh, in the last six years, we've received a lot of, uh, upgrades and replacements. We had, we, we received this, uh, break meeting room, converted, uh, the old garage in the administration building into a break room, uh, and an office. We, at the same time, we, uh, had a lab expansion and remodel, which was very important. We've been having to do more and more testing and there'll be more coming in the years. You know, we'll be getting a phosphorus standard, I'm sure, within a few years. And that'll require more equipment and this, this helps a lot for, for that. And all these things, in addition to the, uh, de-watering facility, the headworks upgrade, uh, this isn't just the centrifuge over in that new building. We also have a nice shop area with storage, uh, a place to repair our equipment. The, here's a, here's a picture of Paul, our mechanic, uh, repairing on our, on our influence pump. Nice, big area, plenty of room and light to work on this equipment. The plant were, uh, has a standby generator. We're required to have power other than grid power should the grid go down. We have a standby generator that will run pretty much the whole plant should that go down. We're in the process right now, this fall, we'll be getting the automatic transfer switch replaced. That, what that switch does is when the power does go out, it fires up the generator and switches all the load over to that generator. And then when the power comes back on, it monitors that for a while and then switches the load back over to grid power. And that's a little over six thousand dollars, I think, was our, our, uh, bid on that for, and they'll be, it, the, the switch is on order. They're going to get it in. We'll probably have it installed in October, which the, the current switch that's in there is going bad. It has hot spots and of course, of its age, you can't get parts for it anymore. And that, that's the reason for needing a new, new switch. The whole plant in general is twenty-eight years old and a lot of the equipment is getting to the point of needing to be replaced. A lot of it, again, old and you can't get parts. Uh, or if you can, they all have to be made and cost an exorbitant amount of money. All our aerators here on the oxidation ditch and the gear drives for those aerators are wearing out pretty fast, I would guess. You know, we're, we're down to just four motors. There's four aerators up there. We had five motors. We had a spare. One of the motors finally just kind of couldn't take it anymore and it basically just broke up on the inside when it did go bad. A new motor is, because it has a special face on it, of course, everything's different. And it's about twelve thousand dollars to replace, uh, that seventy-five horse mo- motor, you know? Just generally, I think you could get a seventy-five horse motor for six, seven, you know, without specialties on it. And, and those, uh, gear drives, they're been running, you know, we only use two at a time, but you know, so in the twenty-eight years, they've each got fourteen years of service on them, you know? But they're out there in the heat of the summer and the cold of the winter and they're, they're going to wear out. The clarifiers, they have mechanisms, gear drives and scraper mechanisms on the inside and that is starting to deteriorate. They're not falling apart yet, but as, once it starts, it's, it starts going. And so the, these things have to be looked at for, not today, you know, but it, it start have to considering it for future needs. The, uh, in two thousand eight, when I started, our average flow for the, our average daily flow was one point six million gallons per day. We're up to two point two now. As, you know, that gets higher pretty soon, we're going to have to be running two clarifiers full-time. It's nice now, you know, one, something happens, we have, you know, a whole another one to go to if there's a problem or something. But eventually we'll be running, you know, if it continues to go up, our flow, we will, uh, need to be running the whole plant. And of course, that'll be more money. The, uh, septic dump station where, where the septic haulers dump is, I don't know, the picture doesn't show up, but the pavement there, pretty soon that's just going to be gone. And they'll be in dirt and it'll be a muddy mess. And that whole design of the drive-through there, you know, for large vehicles, we get, you know, eighteen-wheelers coming in, you know? Uh, like from HB Rental and stuff, you know, they haul waste from the oil field, uh, wastewater and the, the big trucks from the haulers, you know? They have a hard time making it in there. Some units just have big fifth-wheel trailers and, and then of course, campers also have, can have a hard time getting in there. We've had tour buses come in, the, the big coaches, you know? They back in there. I don't know how they get in there, but they do. We took pictures of one, you know, so they could dump in there. But, uh, that, that, this all, at minimum, we gonna have to look at just, uh, overlay or, you know, a, a better design of the drive-through there in future. The, uh, we have looked at energy savings, like for our, our UVs, they run magnetic ballasts in there. There's thirty-six ballasts per unit. Uh, one, one ballast for two bulbs. There's one outfit we've talked to that claims, you know, we can go to an, an electronic ballast of their design, you know? They would engineer it for that, but, you know, saving a fifty-plus percent, maybe up to eighty percent in energy costs on that. But the problem is you can't just a couple here at a time. It has to be, you know, like one whole unit at a time. So, you know, uh, it gets expensive, you know? It's, uh, right now, I think we paid twenty-six dollars a ballast and they didn't think, you know? The new ballast would be any cheaper as far as cost for a ballast, but it would, the savings would be in, in the, in the energy efficiency. The, you know, the INI, the inflow and infiltration in the collection system is a big deal because of the extra flow, like during rain events, we get that big flow that puts more UVs online, more pumps online. And so that costs more money, you know? And there's getting that look, you know, taken care of would be a major help in reducing our flows coming in. I mean, we get lots of gravel coming into the plant and that's just, that's coming from the ground, basically, you know? And that, that's not a good thing. Uh, and of cour-, I mentioned earlier, you know, we'll be looking at phosphorus standards added to our testing in the future. That EPA is gonna say, do it, you know? That's just, they're, they're, but it probably could be ten years before it happens here, but it might be sooner. Other than that, that's pretty much in a nutshell.
Thank you, Dan. That was a very good presentation. Um, I've been through the tour several times and I learned, uh, you know, even at this time, that I've had people, uh, comment about, well, here you've got the, the sewer treatment plant right next door to the ball fields, that they're using potable water on the ball fields. So it's good to hear that, no, that's not true, that we're not. So that's, that was, uh, interesting. But, uh, does any of the council have any questions of Mr. Bach?
Dan, I was just wondering, I was just wondering what the number one job was.
Registered nurse. Police officer was number eight.
That was unkind. Thank you again. That was a very good presentation. We appreciate it. We appreciate all that you and your men do down there. Uh, it, I, I agree, it's a very important part of our production. So I, I recall Mr. Urbikat one time made the comment that the water that we put back into the river is cleaner than the water we take out of the river.
Yes.
And so I, it's, uh, it's interesting process. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Your honor, I'd like to put a plug in for the biosolids. Uh, I use that in my garden this year. And, uh, my wife had taken a picture of some of our sunflowers. They were about, uh, four or five feet above the fence, which is six feet tall. And someone commented, what, what did you feed those things to get them so big? And she said, you don't want to know. But the garden has flourished this year because we've mixed those biosolids in and it, it's really, once my kids found out what they were, they were a little nervous about, woo, that's what this is? But you, there's not really that smell and it's, it worked really good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Okay, thanks. Have a good evening.
Okay, agenda item number seven, Wyoming.com presentation, please.
Okay, uh, good evening. Excuse me, my name's Chris Robish with Wyoming.com. Director of Sales, Marketing and Public Policy for the company. And I also work for a sister company or commonly owned affiliate, uh, contact communications. Thank you to the mayor, the council, Mr. Weaver, for having us here tonight. We wanted to, we've really been involved in a major project for the last, if my math is correct, eighteen months, um, that, uh, we started here in northern Fremont. And we wanted to at least take some time to come to you, to explain to you what we're doing as we're based here and it affects your constituents, affects our customers and, um, and some of the neighboring communities as well. Not bore you too much, not get too technical. Um, when I ever, I speak to the legislature, I have to always be very careful not to get into technical terms. And I'm a sales guy, so I won't get too far, uh, in, in towards engineering and things of that nature. But we wanted to kind of take a moment, or twenty minutes maybe, um, to explain to you what we're doing, how we're impacting the community. Kind of take it from the twenty thousand foot view, give you a little bit of history, who we are, work our way down to today, um, and then give you an opportunity to ask some questions about what we're doing. Um, and I would also be remiss if I didn't mention that a week from Thursday, the eighteenth, we're going to have another customer appreciation day during the middle of the day, the lunch hour. Um, we did this in April, uh, to celebrate our twentieth anniversary in business. Uh, the mayor was kind enough to come. Um, and it was an opportunity for us to, you know, we got staff out cooking burgers and hot dogs and brats and things. Um, I was in favor of having beer, but unfortunately, that was, uh, the boss voted that one down. But, um, we gave neighboring businesses and customers, um, an opportunity to come and, and meet the people they work with. We got to meet the customers and the turnout was very good. Um, and the customers really responded positively to it. Now, I'm not sure if it was the free lunch or seeing what we were, we're coming up with for the future, but they've been asking us to do another one. So we thought, well, rather than every five years or every ten years, we might as well do it twice a year. Um, so we're going to do that a week from Thursday and we, we'd love you folks to come out and at least get lunch on us and see what we're doing and meet our staff. We do employ about forty-five folks, um, from Riverton, right here in Riverton. So I'll begin with the presentation. And if there's something that, that throws you, please don't hesitate to interrupt me. And I'm gonna hope I know how to use this version of PowerPoint because now I'm looking for buttons. Uh, let's see here. Nope.
To do the next slide. Spacebar.
Spacebar? I'm the technology guy, right? Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Um, so tonight, I want to just give you a brief history of, of Wyoming.com and our network across the state. We do operate across the state. An explanation of the services and technologies that we provide. Get into this wonderful project that we're, the whole reason we're here, the Wireless Next Gen project. The options and prices that we offer to the marketplace. And then also talk about opportunities, what this means for communities, whether it be consumers, businesses or public entities. We've already had some, some public entities in, in the area say, okay, now that you've built these towers, how can we use them? So we've already had some of those requests and we'll talk a little bit about that. Okay, so we were founded in ninety-four and, um, by Mr. Steve Mossbrook. Actually, in Lander, the business moved over here shortly after that. It was, yes, it was founded on April Fool's Day. Um, and Steve has not lived that one down from staff. Every year he gets that. We're now headquartered here in Riverton, up on the top of the hill on West Main Street. We provide internet and voice and data networking and security services throughout Wyoming. DSL wireless, T1s, T3s, Etherlink, um, some specialty fiber and some specialty microwave services. And now the Wireless Next Gen is, is the new product that we're launching. We also provide voice. In the old days, it was the phone company and it was the internet company, um, or two different companies. Now, everybody does everything and that includes us. We also provide phone services. And then, of course, we do some equipment. We do a lot of home-based equipment, the little Wi-Fi devices to make your, your iPads connect to the internet, um, or your games or all the other stuff I don't use at home. And we also get into larger equipment for businesses, um, the cities, the counties, the, uh, the schools and what have you. And our customers include consumers, um, of course, business, municipalities, educational concerns, all the way from the state, uh, to the cities. This is just a, a picture of our net, our statewide network. And every time I create one of these for marketing purposes, um, engineering forces a change. So as Next Gen gets done in northern Fremont, you'll see some changes. A couple of things I want to make a brief note of, um, as we get into the next slide. We do get to the internet with some redundancy, both through Rock Springs and Casper. And redundancy is a word you'll hear me mention a couple of times. The main point of that is if one area or one city or one route in that network goes down, the other is there for automatic failover. And it actually, the best analogy I can give you on that automatic failover is, um, if you play tennis or you swing golf, you cannot, or excuse me, swing a tennis racket or play golf, um, you can't complete a quarter of a golf swing or a quarter of a, a swing of a tennis racket before that switches over. It's the best example I could give you. So that protects traffic, especially when there's voice service. Um, nine-one-one calls can't drop. So that's the importance of that. The core network, which you'll hear me mention, is Casper to Riverton, Riverton down to Rock Springs, Rock Springs over to Cheyenne and back up. That's that circular core. We have built and, and have, over the years, have taken it upon ourselves to become less reliant on, uh, carrier partners, folks like ACT, RT, Century Link, and some of the biggies that, that do some stuff around the world, like Level Three and ZIO, who we partner with in those yellow clouds. We've built our own microwave from, from- We've built our own microwave from, from Riverton, the rodeo towers that we have here in, in Riverton, which are so vital to us, direct microwave traffic all the way down to Rock Springs to get to the internet. It's completely independent. Fiber's great. There's a lot of sexy marketing to fiber. You hear it a lot in, in the media, but microwave is just as capable. And in our rural state, in our rural market, and some of the difficult terrain to bury things in, microwave's a lot easier, a lot less expensive for privately funded carriers as well. So some of our recent network milestones to see, to show you kind of the evolution of where we're going, or excuse me, how we got here and where we're going. Last year, we increased that network core, that circular or that square, by 300% in the third quarter, put the investment in for that. Wireless Next Gen Project was in development last year. We launched it February of this year. We actually, if you will, partnered with another commonly owned affiliate company called Sorento. I think the city's probably familiar with it. Sorento specializes in engineering, procurement of materials and construction of those materials in the communications industry. They operate, I don't know exactly how many states we operate in, fourteen, I think? Yeah, fourteen states across the country, large scale, all the way, and some small scale, but large scale communications, private infrastructure. So we hired them to design this network and basically build it for us. That project just covers the, the northern half of Fremont County. We certainly wanted to do all of Fremont, but it was just too big, so we had to break it up, to be honest. The network is a 700% increase in its size and its capacity. You could say 700% in speed if you wanted to. Megabit is, is something that I think a lot of folks are familiar with, ten mags, twenty mags, thirty mags. It's 700% bigger in those terms. Where that is, is being driven from is Netflix, is multiple voice lines, is multiple devices in people's homes. I think the average now is four devices in a home throughout the country, maybe smaller here in rural market, but it's still significant. There's only two of us in my household and we have five, which, and I'm, again, I'm not an engineer. We just play with stuff too much. So that demand, along with voice services and some of the other wonderful things you can do, people working out of their home, you know, rural businesses located five, ten miles outside of town, they are doing accounting on the internet. When they used to have somebody come in and handwrite books or just do it through Microsoft Office, and nowadays, you just do it online. So all that demand, we're now meeting that need and going beyond that. We also are doing a microwave project in Sublet County, Big Piney, Pinedale and out of there. So that's a significant increase. Is Pinedale seeing a lot of growth? And we have other core networks that are being upgraded this year. Lander to Riverton is one we're doubling here this year. And then the southern tier, Rock Springs, Rollins, Laramie and Cheyenne are all getting major upgrades, as is Jackson. So the network is growing big, growing quickly, I should say. And I've already kind of touched on the consumer demand, business demand that's driving that growth faster than, than some days we feel like we can keep up with. So just a brief explanation of our services and the technologies. I don't want to go too far into the non-Next Gen stuff, but just to give you a picture of what we do. Of course, we offer DSL. We were actually the first ones in the state to start providing it back in 2001, and we started here in Riverton and Lander. We offer up to fifteen mags. It's very popular with businesses downtown. There is a, a distance limitation to the technology to about 20,000 feet from the center of town. The center of town differs in each town, but where the, the old CenturyLink or Quest central offices on Washington, we co-locate all of our equipment with our sister company Contact Communications to provide those, those wire-based services. And of course, consumers and businesses is who it's available to. Our wireless service we've had in place since 2002, and we started that in Fremont County, but as the, the earlier map and diagram showed, we offer it in Sublet, Sweetwater, Carbon, Matrona, I'm missing a county, but basically the southern two-thirds we offer, with the exception of Cheyenne. We've had that in place since 2002. It's limited on the residential side to just two and a half mags down, and that's really because of the equipment and the technology of that equipment. Physically, it just can't produce more bandwidth to the customers. And as we've been speaking about, or I've been speaking about, that demand is just quickly outpacing that, that equipment that's out there. Fourteen communities across the state, and I guess I should have looked at my own slide before I was trying to rattle off counties. And again, it's available to consumers and businesses. T1 and T3, some folks may be familiar with this. It's kind of old technology. It's circuit technology. It still works really well. Again, it's provided from the central offices throughout, and we can drive these, there's no distance limitation. We can drive them for hundreds of miles if necessary. Still a fair amount of T1s and T3s out there in service. And these are dedicated, they're totally different technologies, so they're dedicated pipes. I would take up a T1 at one and a half mags over a 10-mag DSL any day, just because of how it moves traffic. So they're much more efficient. It's primarily a business service, and we've been, because they're more expensive, and we've been providing them since 2000. One of our newer products, Etherlink, is an Ethernet over copper lines, whether it's the small lines similar to DSL and phone, or it's over T1s. It's a very popular product for business. It's a little bit more expensive than your standard broadband products, but you can do a lot more with it. Wiring offices together, and, and because it's Ethernet, it looks like, you know, two offices next door in the same building versus two buildings five miles apart. City of Lander is a great example. All of their offices are interconnected with our Etherlink product back to City Hall. So whether it's security, whether it's phone, whether it's normal data, emails, pulling files from a server, everything happens through an Etherlink network, so they don't have to have equipment at ten, eleven different places. The new community center, the thing I always like to tell folks outside of Lander, and Robin Griffin brags about this, is the old community center, she could open up the doors sitting at her desk at City Hall, in part through the Etherlink network and that software. The new community center, she can just open up more doors through the Etherlink center, so she's pretty excited about that stuff. Gives you an idea of what the technology can do. And we also, of course, offer some specialty connection services, fiber, which you can do a myriad of things with, and licensed microwave, which is gaining a lot of popularity here in Wyoming. We use it for a lot of schools that are in remote areas to do large, hundreds of mag, up to a gig you can do through radio, licensed microwave. Of course, we do a bunch of it at the rodeo towers that you're probably familiar with near the airport. Microwave is, is what's driving this Next Gen network. It's completely secure through licensing. You can't interfere with it, and you can do a lot more with licensed microwave. And a lot of municipalities and counties, in addition to schools, are asking for it because they don't want to pay for expensive, you know, ten, twenty thousand dollar a mile fiber builds and tear up streets and everything else. It's a lot easier to do radios, to interconnect things. And we do that throughout the state, and Sorento does it through about fourteen different states. YIOphone is our trade name for the voice product, provided residential as well as business. We provide it over our broadband connection, so it's that voice over internet protocol, which, if you look around, there's only, I think there's only one company that doesn't provide VoIP anymore, and that would be CenturyLink. And they're slowly trying to, I shouldn't put it that way, because they are now friends of ours. They are moving towards digitizing their phone services. It just takes time because of all their old infrastructure. But your cellular, your cable-based phone, and our phone is all VoIP. It's all digital phone these days. We provide that for the residential services, thirty dollars a month, no matter where the customer is at, and it comes with all the fancy features of voicemail to email and all that stuff that I don't know how to use yet. And the business services, it's much more, there's far more features, or I shouldn't say features, but there's far more choices for businesses. We offer a number of packages, and then there's à la carte to it. You can always add a line. And in, with digital technology, you don't have the expense of a physical line every time you need a phone line. It's virtual. So I always give the example to folks of, think of a big pipe, and you just take up a little sliver of that pipe. It's just like threading wire through a, through a pipe. Every wire is aligned. You just keep throwing more wire into it. Eventually, you fill it up so you buy more bandwidth, but there is not a physical cost to increase it, and businesses take advantage of that. The thing that we like to talk about with the legislature and community leaders is that the digital phone service, the YIOphone that we provide, especially when you get outside of downtown, is less expensive than anything else out there. One of the big challenges for the state policymakers are constantly wrestling with is how do we ensure that phone services are brought to every citizen? But it doesn't cost them an arm and a leg to get it. So if you're in Zone One, Zone Two, Zone Three, as they call it in the phone system, if you, if you live out halfway between here and Shoshone, for example, you may pay seventy, seventy-five, eighty dollars a month just for a phone line, no internet, just a phone line. But the advancement of technology and what we're doing with this Next Gen especially, folks out there can get phone for thirty dollars a month. That solves policymakers' decisions, it solves citizens' decision, and we don't have to draw from federal funds or state funds, USF funds, to do that. Where in other territories of Wyoming, the old phone companies are constantly pulling money from a state fund, which all of you and your phone bills pay into. So we're trying not to do that. We pride ourselves on being privately funded. So we're helping solve that problem, especially here in Fremont County, and we've been providing that service since 2007. So Wireless Next Gen, I think I've probably touched on a few points, but let me get to that in the meat of the issue tonight. So northern Fremont County is the first area for this product. We have hopes of bringing it to southern Fremont, Sweetwater, Sublet, et cetera, throughout the rest of the state. Nobody's doing it quite this way. Entirely new microwave core network. So we've been providing wireless service here since 2002 throughout the county with not as much coverage, not the overlapping coverage that this gives us. So there's, customers have more choices, they can hit more towers. If they have a tree on the west side, don't worry, we can go to the east side, whereas before, that tree may cause major issues. So there's more coverage, and that microwave core is what's bringing that 700% increase and the stability, so that it's, it's up more consistently, more reliably. Seventeen towers in the northern area. There used to be ten. We've put up seven new towers, and we're in the process of adding some of the, the core backhaul pieces, as well as those access points for folks to get connected to. And then all of the equipment is new. I mentioned a little bit ago that our wireless, old wireless service was limited to two and a half meg. That's because that radio at the customer prem, or customer location, and the tower, the access point, they were, they were smaller, they were less capable. Today, the Next Gen equipment, those radios at the customer premise can do, you know, not two and a half meg or, or five meg, but they can do mid-double digit each direction. So you're looking at a customer prem increase of twenty, twenty times, twenty-two times, something like that. We're not coming out with these big fat packages right off the bat. We're going to let demand drive us there, but that means those radios, that investment that we've made, which is significant, is there for the future. It's not just a one or two or three-year plan. It's there for, for consumers for the long haul to meet their needs. Hopefully, it looks better in a piece of paper than it does that slide. I thought it would look better on a screen than it did on paper. This is the, the project map for Zone One, and this is without anything being finished. It's just a really simple map. But you can see Shoshone's in that area, Kinnear Pavilion, and Riverton. Now, where this matters most, I think for the city council and for the people of Riverton, cable modem services only go so far. Trying to come up with, I know that the Hampton Inn, that area, has some business cable services, but I do not believe they go beyond that. But it's still Riverton at that point. Areas west, south, east, same situation. And that's because it's expensive for a cable plan, and their plan is, they focus on the downtown area of, of a city, and the outlying areas of the city aren't necessarily covered. And that the phone companies like CenturyLink, they may drive some DSL out a little further in addition to their phone services, but their phone services are already more expensive than the VoIP-driven services like YIOphone. So the advantage is we're, we're filling in that gap right around the edge of the city and giving folks the bandwidth choices they don't have, and giving them the phone choices for less money, less expense to them that they don't currently have. So we're filling in that gap. And then going out to the rural areas where folks are paying the seventy, eighty dollars a month for phone service, and the only internet they can get is satellite, which is slower or limited, or cellular, we're filling in that gap as well. So there, there's far more choices out there. We do have folks in other counties who have businesses out of the home who make the decision, "You know what? I can't do this anymore. I gotta go rent office space in downtown Lander, or downtown Rock Springs, or downtown Riverton." Well, there's certainly some building owners that like that. As a business owner, that's another additional expense that rural folks that own businesses may not want to have or may not be able to afford. So what the Next Gen is delivering. It's asymmetrical, meaning up and download is not the same. High-speed internet access up to ten mags now. So that's a 400% increase over the max speed that we had before. It's available to consumers and businesses. We launched the project in February. It involves equipment replacement for all of our existing customers, roughly 2,000, 2,200 folks, so it's a bit, it's a bit of a project. But our field techs are very happy because they're employed for quite a long time now, so they're going to be busy in summer, winter. We began that equipment replacement in July. It's ongoing. It takes time to do that, and we're turning on access points and new towers as we go. We had a waiting list for just new customers, just in this zone of about 300 when we started, and we're now starting to get to them and do some new installs. This is that map revised, showing where you, where we were as of September 1st. Now, the area with the diagonal line from top right to bottom left that's shaded in here, that's the old coverage area. It's still there. We haven't torn it down. Until we finish Next Gen, we won't. The green blobs are the new coverage areas. But that shows you where we are at today, but it, everything within that line will be filled in. For example, when we make changes at Griffey, that really will start to fill in that Riverton area, those outlying areas, and it will cover downtown as well. But that'll start covering east of those four green blobs you see there. So that gives you an idea where we're at, but as soon as we started turning those up, the phones just lit up because people have been waiting and waiting and waiting because they just don't have any other choices, so. So the consumer options, I just at least wanted to summarize it for you. Those are the speed packages. It's download and upload. The prices vary, they are on our website. You can find them, just depends on, we offer customers choices. So some folks want to pay a larger install and have a cheaper monthly price, or vice versa, longer-term contracts, whatever. So we try to offer choices. And business folks, they have choices as well, but there's a little bit more upload, especially when we're dealing with the cloud services and the online applications that a lot of businesses use. We wanted to provide a little bit more upload for them, and then, of course, they get a different level of service during the weekday to make sure their business is up and running. So I want to talk a little bit of some of the opportunities, which I've probably touched on some of these already. The, the big thing with us is making sure that rural customers are taken care of, because so much of Wyoming is rural, so much of our employee base is really from the rural market. And so much of our customer base is from the rural market, and really, we, I'm working with the legislature on, right now, on a new telecom act, is the current act, sunset's next year. And we focused on the word and a, and a sentence in the language that said, "Well, let's worry about USF for rural customers." And then I kind of raised my hand and said, "But isn't all of Wyoming rural? Doesn't that mean USF is now going to go to all people in Wyoming?" Which was not the intent of the discussion. So we kind of, outside of Cheyenne and Casper, we view everything as rural. So. But they can now receive higher speed internet that's slightly beyond today's needs without that latency or that delay of satellite. Or sometimes the movement of cellphone activity. Faster than our old wireless services, which we've touched on. Meets demand for the rural market business and consumer. And it brings broadband, as I've already mentioned, not served by cable or local phone companies. And then the higher upload speeds for businesses that nobody else is providing out to those folks. And now they can receive that digital quality voice services or voice service singular. Lower than the landline provider outside of the base rate or downtown area. Statewide average for essential phone services, no matter where you go, is higher than what we're offering to rural Fremont County or outside downtown, which is a significant achievement for those folks and for the state. And as I mentioned before, we're not using any Wyoming USF funds to do this or federal funds or grants. It also showed us the ability to set up pri, public and private. Let me try that again. Public, private partnerships. Too many Ps in that. As, as we started to design Northern Fremont County, we reached an agreement because, with Fremont County Fire Protection District, because they had some needs as they were building new battalions and they have battalions in remote areas. They need internet access. They need communication services. And their current options were either nonexistent, limited, or very expensive. So we were looking for land for new towers. And we partnered together and set up a situation where we're providing them for the lease communications to their new buildings. And they're providing us the space necessary to put up some really nice towers. So if you head west out towards Kinnear, there's a, there's a fire protection building right there on the highway. There's a nice tower with a generator and a panel. That's our tower. That's a good example of it. Along Missouri Valley. Matter of fact, if you're looking for something to do Friday morning at 10, we're having a ribbon cutting with, um, out at Midvale. So you're more than welcome to enjoy yet another speech if you have something that you want to go listen to. So there were those kind of opportunities. We've had other government entities say, well, since you're building that new tower, can I co-locate a radio on it? Because I need to get from point X to point Y and you're right in the middle. So they're taking advantage of that. We've worked with, you know, vice versa. We've gone to government agencies and said, well, there's space on that tower. Could we co-locate? We'll provide some services to you. We can serve the citizenry. So there's a lot of that discussion going on. And we've seen that in other counties as we've started looking at other areas to develop around the state. That's always the first thing that I get asked when I go meet with city council folks or, or economic development folks. Well, is there a way we can help you? And then you can help us. So that's pretty common. And we would certainly be interested in anything that the city of Riverton would like to talk to us about on that side. If there's problems to solve. Solve communication challenges, which I just kind of touched on. And then provide improved services to the public. The existence of this network, while it's great and there's overlapping coverage and we're going to fill in that, that big map, there are still opportunities to make it better. There always will be. We'll always look, look for ways to make it better. So expanding it in some areas of, of Riverton or Fremont County, we're certainly interested in doing that. And there can be some gains for public entities, excuse me, by partnering with us to do that. Our mic, microwave network provides opportunities and our tower capabilities, along with Sorento's capabilities, provide opportunities for partners. Utilizing the expertise of all three of our companies that are located on the hill that have grown here, Contact, which is a certificated local exchange or competitive local exchange carrier to get into that Quest plant to do the wireline facilities. It's really the backbone. I call it the skeletal structure of Wyoming.com. Because it provides all the ugly wire to get us to the internet. Wyoming.com provides the muscular structure by which that network moves and operates for its customers. And of course, Sorento is, is the engineering team behind everything. And that, that's it. So I appreciate the time and hopefully nobody fell asleep on me or didn't get bored. A, any questions with what we're doing? We're certainly available next week at the open house if, if you guys want to come out and get more details.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions of, which? Looks like you've done a pretty good job.
Thank you.
I, I had, in the, the initial map that you had, it doesn't include DuBois. Is that, you're not able to get up?
It's a very good question.
End of the world, or I don't see anything on the reservation.
We actually have, we're actually, we have some facilities out at, at Eathity or Apaho. And then of course in that zone, what we would call the southern zone or zone two, which is really Lander. We get into the southern part of the reservation in that zone. But today we have a Apaho and Eathity. And the, the technology and the demand in those areas has not been brought forth the way Riverton, Kinnear Pavilion, Shoshone and the markets in between those communities has to the demand. DuBois is a little different and it, and I, I brought up the legislature a couple of times. We are working with the other industry partners, the Verizons, the AT&amp;Ts, the Charters, Century Link, and all the independent phone companies. DuBois Tel runs DuBois. And not to get too far into this, but it is one thing we are analyzing because this Riverton based business is trying to grow, trying to, to maintain some semblance of profit so it can continue to provide services for its customers. DuBois Tel is, is if you will, untouchable. It's a protected monopoly. We can, we can go up there with wireless and provide internet service. But the reality is, nobody wants just internet service. They want internet, they want phone and they want TV. Or a lot of broadband, a lot of internet. So they don't have to buy TV. I mean, the, the cable companies across the country are trying to figure out what they do when cable TV dies in 10 years. That's the direction the industry is going. YouTube, Hulu, Netflix, they're taking over the internet. Anyway, we can't, we're prohibited right now from, from interconnecting our phone network with DuBois Tel customers. We're trying to break that barrier down right now. That's part of why I bring the legislature up because we're working with Chairman Case and, and others to see if we can open up the competitive markets, make Fremont County one county rather than a couple. Hopefully that answers your question.
Well, I, I, I know that that's probably a question that some people have. But in my support of your coming, you know, for a presentation like this is not because I'm, or think that it's appropriate for the city to be endorsing any one company or anything like that. But we are very strongly endorsing a Riverton company that wants to grow. And I think anything we can do to help all of our companies in the area and provide that information to our citizens and use what we have available, you know, to help that happen, I think is appropriate. So, but I understood about 10% of what you were talking about. But.
I can start over if you want me to.
No, that's.
No, I wouldn't do that.
I'm a very slow learner on these things. At any rate, thank you very much, Chris. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council for having us. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Agenda item number eight, beautification committee consideration. Mr. Weaver.
Yes, Your Honor. So one of the council goals this year was to support beautification and continue efforts to beautify the community. More specifically was to establish a task force to gather community input and develop a list of beautification projects. And so staff has, has looked at this issue. Courtney put a lot of work into this. Staff recommendation is that beautification committee consists of members of business associations, economic development organizations, community leaders and citizens at large. They would promote the quality of life in Riverton by creating and supporting activities that improve the physical and aesthetic environment of our community. Some projects could include the implementation of neighborhood cleanup projects, improving the appearance of public sites, education to citizens on private property maintenance, working with other organizations such as the Tree Board, the Garden Club and the Parks Committee. What we don't want to see with this committee is, is something that's going to be overlapping any of those committees, particularly the Parks Committee. You could see how they are, are trying to improve our community, not necessarily to beautify, but to in, in, improve the parks themselves. So we'd want to make sure that the committee is not doing something that's stepping on the toes of any of these other committees. The proposed committee would not be restricted by a maximum number of, of people or have term limits on this. We really feel like it should be an open committee where any, as many people that want to serve on that committee would, we'd welcome that and, and encourage a variety of different kinds of people. Not just someone that's, you know, interested in, I don't know, what, what they'd be interested, but having a variety of different people on, on the, on the committee. So with that, just wanted to kind of open it up to see if you felt like that was a good direction where we could go and advertise for a beautification committee. Do you feel like there's other things that we feel we should task that committee with? It's sometimes hard to get too, too focused because beautification, when you talk about committee, uh, a community is, is a lot of different things when you think of beautification. All the way from weeds, all the way up to improving public lots to anything that's an enhancer community that when people drive through here, they say, wow, this is a place where I want to live.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weaver. Does any of the council have any comments on that opening remark? Yes, Councilman Canaan.
You know, sir, I, I, you know, you've, you've talked about this before and, and you know, and I, I definitely think, you know, you know, getting a committee going, you know, if we can get some people involved in that was, would be a, would be a good start to that, to get a way to go. I guess one question is, is that one of the previous emails you put out, Mr. Weaver, talked about that roundup unlike the water and sanitation fees and then using that roundup to, to help, you know, specific beautification projects in the city. Are you still thinking of, of that idea and, and kind of going forth on that?
You mean with running out sprayers and those type of things?
No, no, I think, I thought your email was more along the lines of that, you know, like if your water bill was.
Oh, yes.
Twenty-seven dollars and nineteen cents, it would get rounded up to forty-eight. And that extra money would go towards specifically beautification for, for Riverton.
I think it's a good idea. I just, I had brought it up to the council. I didn't get a whole lot of input or, or any direction to move direct, you know, forward with that. But I think that would be a great way of people to round up their bill or to contribute some money to a, a public beautification so that that money could be then spent on beautification of the city. I think that's a great idea.
I, I guess that was an idea that Mike Hayes actually shared with me oh, two or three years ago. And they've used it as a fundraiser that allows people to, if, whenever you have a reoccurring bill like that, to just have a slot that you can add a couple bucks or add five bucks or, you know, on a regular basis. And I would, I guess, hate to see it get limited to the beautification. I don't think that would be a bad thing for it to do. But I think it's, it's something that would be just a, something that the community could donate to. And then we could determine where the money goes. It may go to playground equipment, you know, for a period of time or it may go to whatever the needs are in the community. It just kind of a, I hate to use the term slush fund, but that's kind of what, you know, it would be just a way to generate funds into an area that citizens that want to donate and want to help the community, you know, could, could buy into. But rather than just, you know, we may run into the rendezvous committee needs a little extra money. Well, that's an area that, okay, citizens, anyone that wants to donate this month for your rendezvous committee can, that's where the money's going. So. But that, once again, that's just one person's two cents worth on it. But I think anything that we can do to draw attention to the needs of our community, it's really discouraging to me to hear letters in the paper describing the city as Weed City USA. You know, that, that really hurts. And especially the amount of time and effort that our staff and everyone works on to, to have the beautiful community that we have. So I, I think this is going the right, right direction, Stephen. And I know Courtney's been in and visited with me about it. And I think it's headed in the right direction. I, I've, I guess I wouldn't want to necessarily even limit it to citizens of Riverton. If we've got neighbors in the county that live close, you know, then I wouldn't have any problem at all with them being on the committee to help us. We need good people that are concerned about our community and what it looks like. And so I, I think it's a great idea.
I believe at, at some point, Your Honor, there was, there was a committee like this. I don't know how many years ago that was established and how long it went, but I know, I know there was a few people on that.
One, one thing I would hate to see it get into, I, I have in-laws that have lived in Pennsylvania. They've now moved back to Wyoming. They've seen the light. But they have committees back there that have so much power and so much control that you can't plant a tree, you can't take out a tree, you can't move a building. You, you know, and that's not what I think we want to get into, is that kind of control. It may not be government in the strict sense of government control, but it's quasi-governmental organizations that take on that role. And there are always people that will tell you what's beautiful and what isn't. And you give them the reins why they want to head in that direction. So. Anyone else want to comment? Councilman Smith, you're looking awfully pensive over there. You're in.
Additional comments? I just, I think that it's a good start and I think it's a good way to go.
Sir.
Councilman Canaan.
You know, your, your comment about the roundup, I guess my thing would be to kind of tie that to your, back to your idea of your 1% for the, for the roads. Is that if the city ties that roundup more to a specific area, you might get more people that say, yeah, I, I want to contribute to playground equipment. And, and once that level is reached or that equipment is replaced, and then if you change your focus, again, that, that person may continue or you may, you may gather more people.
Pick up a different group.
They see a specific type thing that you're using that roundup for rather than just saying it's going to be a, a general type fund. And then somebody says, well, I'm not going to contribute because.
No, I, I. I would think that it had to be very specific. And that would need to be communicated to the citizens, what that specificity is at this time. But all I'm suggesting is that it doesn't need to be locked into beautification. That it, it could have the flexibility that, okay, for this six months or quarterly or however we would want to, want to define it, to, to give us that flexibility. So.
Your Honor.
I was talking with some staff. Are we one position down in weed and pest side of what we're doing?
Your Honor, we have typically one full-time employee. And then in the seasonal periods, we pick up additional full-time seasonal help as needed. This year, we have two full-time employees devoted to weed and pest, one of which is the full-time regular employee, the other of which is a full-time seasonal employee. Years previous, those employee levels have fluctuated. For example, last year there were three. This year there are two. To say that we are down, I'm not sure if that's 100% accurate. It was just a, a choice made during the budget process that we could get by with two this year for our current needs.
Your Honor, my suggestion, I think this is, this is a great idea. You've been in the paper with the information and Councilman Smith's suggestion that, that possibly we. possibly we could get some community involvement on this is a good idea. But on the other side of that, we've had a lot of discussions about when the fairs in town and the weeds are abundant between the fair route, that it wouldn't hurt for us to make sure that we're at full staff and, and those things are taken care of. And I think that's kind of where we're at now, and my suggestion would be, you know, we, we could do a lot of things with this committee, and there could be a lot of fun opportunities for cleanup and, and get public involvement, very much like the rendezvous has grown. And so I think it's a wonderful idea. I think it's a good idea to keep it open-ended so that anybody that wants to can come and participate. A little bit of heads up, though, it's kind of like the task force for the airport, when you don't have any funds to work with, you're, you're pretty quickly handcuffed. And so it's hard to get something developed and, and moving, and so I think we ought to anticipate, and, and maybe we ought to target specific locations like Main Street and Federal, make sure that they're weed-free, and then move out from, from those zones into other areas. And I think it, man, it gets so dangerous because, you know, in just a short period of time, you know, we used to have discussions on how tall the weeds could be, and so, you know, we, we've got to be somewhat careful that we don't, we don't get something set that's so hard to maintain, we catch ourselves in our own trap. And we've got a lot of city ground that is fairly weedy itself, and so I would, I would suggest some caution there, but I also think the, the discussions about Riverton being a weed city is somewhat, you know, pointed to that point to try to get our attention to, to get some, some things done and get some, some people motivated to, to accomplish that. And I think with this committee and some, some input from them, maybe there's some real simple, simple things that we could do. If it is a weed sprayer, if it is a, if it is a Saturday every month that the community can get together and do those things, I think it'd be smart.
Yeah, Your Honor, one thing I would like to bring up, we did contact the Honor Farm about helping out on public properties, and they're more than happy to. We're developing a list right now that we'll forward to them, and they'll go out on any public property that's owned by the public. They won't go on private property and deal with things, but they'll do anything in public so we can do in streets or areas that are the city owns, and they'll help us out with that. So I, that was pretty positive.
I think that kind of opens any issue that I've got a little bit of a problem with, and that is that Councilman Smith and I talked about it one time, and that has to do with the city cutting weeds on private property. I personally think that's the wrong way to go. I recall that we had had a discussion about that, but I never recalled that we had given direction or authorized the city to do that. Maybe I'm misspeaking, I don't know, but philosophically, I think that's almost an extension of the, the SLURP project that we got ourselves into, going on private property and taking care of situations that are private citizens' responsibility. It's not the responsibility of the city to go in and cut weeds on someone's private property, okay? It's our responsibility, I think, to bring whatever horsepower the city has on private citizens to see that they do their, take care of their own property. But when we take our city staff, okay, and we're shorthanded as it is, is my understanding, or on the edge of taking care of what we can right now. There was a city truck in my alley here not too long ago that was cutting weeds in the alley there, and I don't know if they were cutting weeds because of the ditch that runs in. They may have been clearing some, some weeds out of the ditch, I don't know, but I, I just think that's an issue that we need to take another look at. You know, it's, if I have a piece of property that has weeds on it, then I can darn well take care of the weeds, or the city can enforce our weed ordinances, but for us to take city staff and crew and equipment and go in and cut their weeds and then send them a bill for it, when I have friends that are trying to make a living in the private sector cutting weeds and taking care of properties, I just, I, I think that that's going the wrong direction, but I don't know. That was one that, I came upon that, you know, I discover things occasionally, and that was, that was one of them. I didn't realize that we were doing that. I knew that we, we had talked about charging or extra for staff time for doing the paperwork and whatnot, but I didn't realize that, that we actually had our people out there doing that work on private citizens' properties. So I don't know if any of the rest of the council has any commentary that they would like to, to make or not.
Your Honor, the system that we have in place is, it really needs to be looked at, and first of all, we wait for a fellow neighbor to turn in a property, and so we already have a situation where one neighbor is, is displeased with, with what they see. And so I don't know that there's a better system, but it sure doesn't build good neighborhoods. And, and then when we have our poor enforcement officer goes out, and I believe the, I looked at that again today, wasn't it 545 instances that she went out and tried to motivate people to cut their weeds and beautify their yard? And I would, I would guess just offhand that the majority of people after the first contact did something within those first 10 days. And in our experience over the years, if the, if the fees are so, so inexpensive, they wait and let the contractors that the city has set up do the work and, and say, great, you know, I'll, I'll be more than glad to pay that. If they get so absorbent, then they're immediately in challenging our clerks and staff over what a ridiculous price you're charging to cut these weeds. And when they then get their back up and take the full length of what time the law gives them to do their work, winter kills their, kills the weeds. And so we come up with an empty shell of 90 days of summertime with weeds. I can think of a weed right now on Main Street that is taller than myself, and maybe we should have a, maybe we should have, I see Kyle's going to write something down here. Maybe we should have a trophy for who gets the tallest weed, but, you know, somehow we've got to reinstill, not that we're going to send you a bill or who's cutting the weed, but we got to get out and get the weed cut. That's the real problem, before it's too tall. And if that takes city staff, I'm all for city staff. I don't think it's that hard to do, and I don't think there's that many weeds, especially on our main roads, the real, the real roads that you see coming through Riverton. I think the mayor's right. I think Councilman Smith's right. We shouldn't be cutting on private property if there's contractors that will do that work. It ought to go out to those contractors to do that work, but on a timely basis, and we can't be overcharging the public for what we're doing. I believe the weeds were cut on that Adams property within two hours. They were done before nine in the morning. I don't know when they started, but that was a great improvement. Whoever's choice that was to go get that done was a great improvement, and I realize it was done with city staff. I don't know how many attempts were made, if any attempts were made to use a private contractor, but we need to be aggressive like that and get that stuff done so we, we do have a point of reference of something got accomplished in a timely basis when weeds are still growing, not, you know, I think it's going to snow this week, sometime around Thursday, and, and the Lord will take care of it again for us. And so I do think there's opportunities for us. I don't know that those are all correct ways to do it, but whatever we can do to help people realize that they, it would be better if they keep a yard and keep it mowed and take care of it and keep it watered. I have people come to me and tell me that our water bills are too high so they don't water their grass. I really don't think that's the case, and, you know, it's a fairly low bill, and, and yet that's one of the excuses. So I think a group like this could discuss that and come up with some positive changes and some positive opportunities to enhance and help people. There's always going to be a certain group of people that don't want to take care of their property. There are always going to be those, but if we can turn the corner, just like the, I mentioned a month or so ago, that note I got from the Garden Club was awfully kind of them to send those out, and that's a positive opportunity to help the people in Riverton see what they, what could be. And so I, I think we need to get more aggressive on the weeds and not sit back and, and think of another way we, we can get our neighbors to turn each other in. Thank you, Your Honor.
Your Honor. Yes, Councilman Larson.
On your, your statement, Rich, about, I don't think water bills are too high, I think they're exorbitant, and my facts are that I'm paying seven to eight hundred dollars per apartment, four-plex, for the privilege of keeping it green and nice, and I choose to do that. I've got another property on Second Street that is nice, and I choose to pay eight to nine hundred dollars in the summertime for water, but, you know, I, I, I guess I should have designed them so that they're all concrete.
Excaping, I think it's called.
And, but, you know, my own water bill at my house is close to $200 a month. Now, that's excluding sewer. That's just what I pay. Now, that's, that's, I understand that we can take that money, and that's an enterprise fund. I would like to be selling water much more to other parts of the county, but jeez, that is a, you know, that, that takes my profit margin. My, my total income from my property, 10% or more goes to just water. Too much.
Your Honor.
And, and one, one last thing, I don't think you can get an agreement if you go up and down the street and talk to every motel owner and say that they're paying not enough. You know, it's like the man back east is saying, we're not paying enough taxes, and if you're not paying enough taxes, you're not patriotic. Well, I choose to differ on that. Our water, I realize, is a resource, and that's what we pay our bills with, but we are paying plenty for water. Thank you.
Your Honor. Councilman Gard.
I don't, I am not here to say that the water bill could not be, could, could be less. I'm here saying that that is an excuse. Now, if the committee would take a look at that and come back and say, you know, that's why we got brown yards all over town, I'm not opposed to seeing what we could do to, to maintain lower water fees. Now, that's, that's difficult because we want to see what the, what the accounts have in it. The reason, the reason it's up there is because we need the money. That's what it's costing us. And so whether, whether we like what it's costing us or not, then we do have to come back to individuals like yourself and, and put in less green areas and more dry areas, but that, again, can be something that the community could come back with and help people design properties that aren't water consumers, but they still look good instead of a, instead of a yard full of weeds. And so those are positive solutions, instead of just sitting back and waiting for me to turn in Martin because I think he's got a weed in his yard. And last year, I had a constituent call me and say, you know, this individual has weeds in their yard. I went over to look, and there wasn't a weed. I couldn't find a weed in the neighbor's yard. And so I think that there's, I think that there's lots of opportunity in this conversation to have positive input and change things, but we have to get in there and do it aggressively and on a timeline because we only have 90 days of summer, and then we're, then we're off to something else. And, and you got to be fair about it. I drove through Lander today. Lander has weeds. There isn't, it is, just isn't Riverton. You can get in the paper and say Lander's a weed city if you choose to. I'm not trying to point fingers at the water problem or any other problem. What I'm trying to suggest is if this committee is proactive, maybe we can help citizens with ways to fix the reason that they don't want to maintain their properties. But I think there'll always be people that don't want to maintain their properties, and then the city of Riverton needs to be ready to take care of those on a timely basis and as quickly as we can. And I don't know that that has to be done with our own people. Private contractors usually are less money, but I think the city has some experience of being gouged by private contractors. And so I think we need to get that established also. And so with that said, I just think that it's a, it's a interesting subject. It wouldn't be brought up in the community if they weren't concerned with it, and that's who we really should be taking care of here with our trash service, with water service, with all of these services. We work for the citizens of Riverton, not for what we think is a good-looking and the way things ought to be. We work for them, and that's whose comments we should service and, and take care of those comments, and if weeds are what they're concerned with, we ought to get them cut. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other comments?
I guess my closing remark is that I think we're all opposed to weeds, and I had thought of a couple years ago, having Kosha Day down at the fairgrounds and see who could grow the biggest Kosha weed and, you know, make an event out of it. I think that would certainly be a possibility. I just think that where we need to be aggressive is aggressive on the enforcement of the codes that we have regarding weeds, and that's where I'm coming from, and who turns them in, or if it's our code enforcement officer, that's all, you know, that's smoke and mirrors as far as I can see. You still have the weeds out there, and we need to be enforcing our codes, okay? And we need to be doing it aggressively so that if a person has property that, obviously it's a judgment call, we, we go through judgment calls all the time, and that's what that enforcement officer is for. And to, to draw those distinctions between a yard that, that has one weed and a yard that's just completely overgrown, but to suggest that the city should be taking its staff and going on private property and cutting weeds, I think is wrong. I think it's the individual citizens. If Councilman Larson wants to have green yards and it's causing a problem on his income, then he can sell one of his properties so that he can have the green grass on it, or he can put in excuse. Those are all personal decisions and personal choices that we all have to make in our life, where, where we're going to spend our resources, but I just feel that it's wrong for the city to be sending, spending its resources of all of the citizens on a private citizen's property because he won't take care of his property. I think that's wrong, so. Anyway, I think we've beat that dead horse. Unless there's someone else who would like to give a final comment?
One last comment.
Okay, Councilman Larson.
I'm talking, one last comment, meaning we, we had talked
Oh, this won't be over.
We had talked about Pure Gas Road and the 1% going down and filling in some black holes in there. I was wondering who was responsible for the lighting at the end of Pure Gas Road where it butts up against Redwood Road. Right there is, is as dark a place as it can be. There's, and, and so, I know, just road repair, but man, I would love to put in a light there so that that can, because it's such a difficult corner to, we, on the one-hand side difficult corner to, we, on the one-hand side, you have the trails to, and on the left-hand side, you've got a big ditch and an open field. And so it's just, you know, anyway.
There's, there's plenty of rooms for improvement. There's no question about it.
Correct.
Your Honor.
Yes, Councilman Guard.
Can't we request from, um, Rocky Mountain that they take a look at that intersection and see if it would fit into their grid system?
Your Honor, the issue with, uh, these new streetlights, it's a little bit more complicated than, um, we would have to pay for the installation of it, everything, and then we'd have to agree to pay the monthly fees. So it's more than, 'cause we've just gotten some requests from other agencies within the city. And some of those are ten, fifteen thousand dollar bills to put in a light. It's not a, a small little task, um, 'cause you've gotta pay to put it in. And then you agree to pay fifteen bucks a month for the time of a life just for the electricity for it. So we, we have, we usually have the police department and we also have our engineer staff that, that look at certain intersections. And that's typically the only place where we put streetlights. If they're strictly there for safety, then we tend to not do those because those are, then personally people can put up their own. But they're mainly for intersections for traffic safeties. So, I mean, that's one we can look at, make sure it's within the city limits.
It would be appropriate, uh, as Councilman Larson has pointed out, that would be a good place for us to take a look at and see if it truly does need it. Um, I have no reason not to believe that it does, but, uh, okay. I think that, uh, that takes care of all of the agenda, this, for this evening. Uh, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn the council work session.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved in second. All those in favor, second if I was saying aye.
Aye.